This is Monday, July 15th, 6:00 PM. Opening the Board of Selectmen's meeting. Selectmen Baumgartner, Selectman Chico, myself, Paul Sadik, Town Administrator Richard Brown, our Administrative Assistant, Alan Galls. We've got video of the meeting, and also a taping, audio tape of the meeting. Okay. We're gonna take this gentleman out of water here because he has a very important business to attend after the meeting here. He has to go watch his son play baseball.
Thank you.
Come right up. Bring your chair up so you can explain to us what you're doing. Show us what you want.
My name is Darren McHale's from Foresite Engineering. I'm here on behalf of Jerry Velozo. Jerry Velozo. And what we are proposing is a septic repair. And it is on Long Pond, which is the water supply. So obviously, we're trying to get the septic as far away from the water supply as possible, which we have done. We also have a wetland on the other side that we're staying away from at the same time. And this is an advanced treatment system that we're proposing. We require an annual maintenance contract for the life of the system. So basically, the water coming out of this system is almost drinkable. The only thing will contain will be the nitrates, but it's not a de-nitrification system. The existing septic is barely 50 feet away from Long Pond now. It's a cesspool. It's definitely in the water table. In failure currently. In order to propose all the new changes, we're relocating the existing well, which was in front of the dwelling. We're gonna drill a new well to the rear. It'll be a point well or a dug shallow well. That's up to the homeowner. And everything feeds into this treatment system and then gets pumped up into this pressure dial system. It's the exact same system we did at number 15 two years ago. We're down right over there.
Okay, so, County Road.
Yep.
Girard Avenue, right?
Yep.
This is the pond here?
Yes.
And this is on Point Appliance Road?
Yes. Point Appliance doesn't go all the way through, so this is on the dirt.
This is, the only way you access this is down to Girard, Denise?
Yep, Denise or Lucy are the only two ways to get to it.
Where is the building? Who would guys this?
The building itself?
But where is it on this lot here? No, just tell me about where it is.
Oh, this is the lot, right there.
That is the lot?
That is the lot, yep. Yep, there's a curve in the road right there, and you have Warhous going this way, and then that road, that ends with some wetlands and the other end of Point Appliance, which comes out on the County Road.
Just run. Anybody from any one of our health agents?
Yeah, I talked to Joe about it today. And, I mean, if you're actually talking about a secondary treatment facility.
Correct.
I mean, it's pretty advanced for a single residential structure.
Yeah, it's only a two-bedroom home. We overdesigned it for three bedrooms, just the system's big enough to handle that. You know, we're trying to do more of these systems on the pond to protect the water supply rather than a conventional system.
Sure, having this.
Was this damage during the floods, do you know?
I would guess that this entire lot under water at that point. I'm sure it was already in the water table. I think we called water at like four feet down here on the water budding, and that pipe's a foot and a half low grade, so we have three feet into the water table. So if that's one reason that it's worked for so long, is every spring the system gets cleaned out, and then summer it drops back out and...
Where does it go?
Yeah, that's right. You know where it goes.
Know where it goes.
And you said 15 did the same thing, correct?
Yes, 15, we did the exact same type of system. We have their treatment tanks here, and then their small raised pressure dials.
So you know what system they're gonna go with? What well they're gonna go with?
He is gonna first try and dig a well, and it will point himself. So that he can have the pump and everything in the house. If that does not work, then he will get a smaller truck down there and he will drive it. We do have conservation approval for either way. If he drives a well, he'll have to have a small water area with hay bales.
Right.
Because a lot of fence and like everything. If he's able to dig and drive a point in which he thinks he'll be able to, I don't see why not, with a lot of tables at three feet.
Yeah.
He gets it 30, I think his existing well is only 30 feet deep. So that's a shallow well.
In the future, could we have the Board Health Agent here to come to the meeting in case we have any questions as well? There's already that. These are Board Health Agents, so, alright. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, I'll just leave it.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay. The next thing on our agenda was at 6:05, and that was a dog hearing. That dog hearing has been canceled at request of the complainant. Apparently, the complainant is moving to another town. And he doesn't want to pursue the matter. So, that leaves us with, the next thing on the agenda is weekly public discussion period. Anybody wanna talk for me?
Yeah, it's a chipmunks, you're eating my tomatoes.
Hi, can I have that?
From Paul Sadik, nice one.
Yeah.
You've done a fine job.
Yep, my name is Tom DeRosa. I own a business in Free Town. And I am, I don't know if you're gonna read it, but this is a FOIA request. And I made one 320, it's identical, but this is the original. That's a facsimile. Now you have a hard copy, it's 900 terms blackened.
Thank you.
And I was wondering if the Board has received any communication from our investigator?
What we're waiting for right now is to investigate that with Mr. Bourgeois this last Friday. We're waiting for the list of the docs, so we can compile them together, and then we'll have the package from the investigator.
Okay. And do we have a timeframe on that? Like month, week?
Oh, I don't think it's gonna be a month. I would expect, I can't, I can't tell you, I haven't talked to the investigator, I would expect that would be less than two weeks.
Okay. And is this something that's gonna be like a preliminary report, or is it gonna be his final report, or is it gonna be a working document?
This is a compilation of what the investigator has done, Mr. Bourgeois, you know, working on this town.
But this is separate from him, that whether it's him or anybody else, that it's not asking about specifics about anybody per se.
I don't understand what you're saying.
I'm looking for a completed report, or a preliminary report. What's in the report is not my, that's not what I care about. I'm asking about when this report will be available.
Well, what I'm telling you, and trying to explain it to you, is that what we're getting from the investigator is a compilation of all his meetings with all the individuals that he met.
Okay.
We're waiting for the last meeting that we have with Mr. Bourgeois, which is on Friday. That's the extent of what's gonna be available. This is nothing else available. And the reason there's nothing else available, but Mr. Bourgeois no longer works for us. The town has already spent, to our attorneys, almost $13,000, not counting approximately $12,000 additional to the investigator. There's no reason to pursue anything else. There was absolutely no criminal activity associated with Mr. Bourgeois. We don't wanna spend any, we're at like, you know, that 13 is about 25 grand, right?
And that's prudent, and it's, I guess it's called for, and that decision to do that isn't up for debate, I guess. I guess what I'm looking for is, this gentleman went and did fact-finding, we'll call it, and I was wondering when those facts are gonna be published.
As soon as we get them, they'll be available.
Okay. Is that something that's gonna be released to the public, or is it gonna be?
We will, well, I plan at some point tonight to take a vote, ask the Board for a vote, and then we can release this.
Okay.
And if the Board chooses to release it, then it'll be available to anybody who wants to come in and make a review of the information.
Wonderful. You've answered all my questions. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mind if I speak to you from here? Just identify yourself. Dicked it out, one Chase Road. I came in tonight, I've read so many negative articles in the newspapers from former selectmen editorial by newspapers that are here today. And I came here to defend this board. You can criticize this board for the last 20 years prior to April 1st, but this board deserved no criticism. The right thing was done in not reappointing the former building inspector. The right thing was done in splitting up the duties of the building department so that one person will never have that kind of power and authority again. I am totally on board with that. I know that this board did not stop the investigation before its completion. I've talked to the inspector many times. The last time was the first or second week of June, and he assured me his investigation was done. I know that this board did not stop that investigation. The inspector told me face-to-face that there was no criminal activity or intent uncovered. So there's nothing left for this board to do. I do believe we ought to make the report public. I would love to see it online. It's a 200-page report or whatever the heck it is. I don't wanna see the town making 40,000 copies to get it into the hands of residents. I would love to see it put on the website. Anybody who wants to download and print it can do so. The report should be made public, but this board deserves no further criticism.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
The thing that bothered me the most about the criticism that was levied against us is they questioned our integrity as to whether we would. In fact, some of the articles indicated that we were hiding things to protect our own selves, as well as other people. And for anybody to even make that suggestion, including the two newspapers that made the suggestion, it's just beyond...
They're both there and I...
Because they never spoke to us before they made those allegations, and I think that's very wrong.
I agree with you.
And, you know, my integrity means a lot to me, and sure, my fellow members here for the Board, their integrity is very important to them as well. And for us to have to listen to that and see it in print, or anybody talking to us, and even thinking that we would do that. If there was any criminal activity that was discovered regarding Mr. Bourgeois here, it would have been referred immediately. And, you know, people question some of the things that we do. We do things for the best interest of Free Town, not for Paul Sadik, Lisa Pacheco, Lee Baumgartner. And we do things because it protects the town. We even brought up copies of the agreement between Paul Bourgeois and the Board of Selectmen. It's public record. It was done in a public meeting. It's right there for anybody that wants it. And certainly, we'll ask for a vote later on and see if the Board wants to make the documents that were done by the investigator, once we get them all, to release them. It's fine. We've got nothing to hide.
Well, if I may, the residents and the taxpayers of this town are paid to get that investigation done. They deserve to see the report. That's my opinion. That won't change, no matter what happens. I don't care what's in it. I understand that Mr. Bourgeois was not terminated. He was not, he was just simply not reappointed. He was not reappointed, he was not not reappointed because of criminal activity or criminal intent. He was not reappointed because of the residents that showed up at those meetings and said they were mistreated. And that, you're the first board that has dealt with the problem in 20 years, and I commend you.
The other thing I wanna comment on is, one of the other vocal things that was written in the paper has to do with building that was constructed on an install way. Now, we went back, this board went back, and you looked at all the documents that you taken out. There's nothing out of line with that building, although the person that the complainant speaks to is. We've had, we've asked, I asked the Town Administrator to talk to one of our interim building inspectors to go back and take a look at that facility and make sure that nothing else has been done at that location. Because about a year ago, Mr. Bourgeois put a cease and desist order because he found that a couple things were done that weren't on the plan. And the only way to resolve that was to come back to the town, have him relook at the new plans and assess it. Nothing has come back to the town and did. And I know that three or four months ago, there had been no additional activity, but we just wanted to double-check. So I've asked Mr. Brown to contact one of the guys that's filling in right now to take a look at that. I wanna put that complaint at ease, that we're not turning our heads, we've never turned our heads, but when something is done in accordance with the laws of the common law and the laws of Free Town, that's the way it is, whether you like it or you don't.
I agree completely. The only response, though, the Board, obviously, the building department has an obligation to get things done, built according to regulations, safety, I understand that. People can get turned down for something they wanna do. They just need to be turned down civilly. They don't need to be abused when they're being turned down. And if you guys accomplish that, I'm with you.
Okay. So, with that, what's next on the agenda? Ambulance fees. Nobody else has anything else, right? Let's go to the next.
Sweet, you're not here for public discussion, are you?
No.
Okay.
Sweet's thinking of running for selectmen. Okay. This is from the Fire Chief, Gary Sylvia, Janice Boucher. We get these unpaid invoices for ambulance charges. These are the normal abatements that we have on a monthly basis. And this pertains to people that are transported, the insurance doesn't cover everything. And I know many, many years ago, when we agreed to have full-time ambulance service, it was voted at a town meeting, that anybody that didn't have coverage, or their coverage didn't cover everything, that they would not be charged. The town picks it up. That's how it should have been, because before, we enacted this to allow the fire departments to charge the insurance companies. We were paying for everything. And we continued doing what we agreed to do at the town meeting. So unpaid invoices for December 12th, December 2012, month 1,000, 46601. And, assignment insurance write-offs from the month of June 13, June 2013, is $39,000, 43608. What's the Board's pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No, unanimous. Thank you. Alright. The next thing is the signing of the 12th Annual Cranberry Tri-Fest for August 24th and 25th, 2013, that travels through Free Town.
So I understand one is 26 miles, a marathon, the other one's half marathon?
So it'd be 13, right?
14, right.
Did that without a calculator? Alright. It doesn't look like it's gonna be a big impact on the first day with Free Town. They're coming down Morton Road, looks like the 18. And then they're gonna come back through, it must be Mason, right?
Yeah, going down north, north, Mason's own.
Mason's own, 18. Yep, and back up Philly.
That's the 26 mile.
And then there's the bike.
Yeah, the bikes.
The second one is 14, 22 miles.
14. That's only a little stretch in Free Town.
Yeah. This is something they've done before, obviously?
Yeah. It's been recommended by the Chief of Police, by the Fire Chief, by the Highway Surveyor.
I'll make a motion to approve the discussion.
Motion made to approve the discussion, go ahead.
I'd like to have these put on the town website so those people that live in these areas will know when these events are gonna take place.
Okay. So, we left your thought question.
Yeah.
Alright, motion made. Second. You seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No. Okay, that's good. Married 17-point apines? That's it. We already did that. And now we can turn it over to the Board of Health? We don't have to, because we already did the Board of Health.
No, but through the Board of Health, just please, this week is really, really hot. Please make sure your pets are well taken care of. Please check on your elders and neighbors, just to make sure they're cool, anything that you can do for them. Also, I'd like to have the Town Administrator look to the COA as a cooling house for those people that don't have those LBOE, or anybody else actually in town, that doesn't have, you know, air conditioners or a way to cool up to be able to open up the COA and have them come down. We've done that in the past. That's it?
You notice when she said, "Check on your LBOE neighbors," you notice?
They both call me every morning.
Are you okay? I'm sure she took some very good care of you over there.
I better keep my...
I'm gonna ask your question. Your remarks about making sure there's a local website is excellent, except half the time when you go to the town website, it's not available.
Oh, that brings...
Yeah, we're working on that. But once, not only for this one, but for all of them.
I agree, all that stuff should be out, but it's just that I've gone to the town website numerous times, and it's not available, it's down.
Yeah, we just...
Yeah, I haven't seen it down, but...
It was just down, just this weekend, it was down.
Well, we're doing a new website, so...
Right. We have a whole bunch of...
I just wrote back and told them the contracts I were ready to go. They just have to assign a function again.
Doing about training and social...
Well, the first thing they're gonna do is move in a few hours, and talk about what we wanna see in it, and then we'll be trained.
So, we'll turn it over to the personnel board.
Okay, I'd like to add something to the agenda for the personnel board. Our county manager, Boucher, Boucher has some comp time coming.
That has to go into executive session.
That does?
Mm-hmm. Yep. That's a change, that's a change in a contract that has to go into executive session. This is a change in the contract, she doesn't get compensation. She's a salary employee, that's a change in the contract that has to go into executive session. I still wanna make this out to her.
Well, let's do that executive session. Ally? She wants, she says it needs to go into executive session. The issue with that comp time that Janice had learned, when she first came aboard, straight out of the works two years ago?
It's a change to a contract, it's not a contract. Yeah, we can't do that now.
We're on to the next meeting.
When you make a change, the reason why we're talking, when you make a change to a contract or when you, that's not stated in the contract, it has to be done in executive sessions, is that why I said that. They just don't want anybody to get in trouble before they make a change to anybody's contract. It has to be discussed.
Absolutely, you're right.
I just knew. Okay, moving on, moving on to the next thing, discuss the preliminary report regarding the building commissioner, so we did that. It's already behind us. Everybody agree with that?
Yes.
The next thing was to approve a request from the police chief for reinstating Richard I have a little problem with that myself, because it's a precedent-setting thing. Mr. LeBeck separated from the town for over two years. And he's asking for benefits, there's nothing in the contract that says anything about it, nothing, any contract that suggests that we can do that. Myself, as a selectman, I think if you resign this town and you leave, and you're gone for a year or two, then you come back and start as a new tourist for your benefits. That's my feeling. I also think that the union and the police, police would union, should always be involved.
Communication...
Communications unions would be involved, yes. Maybe discuss it with Mr. LeBeck, perhaps send us a letter about how they feel about it, send that to him.
I agree. And that just doesn't go with just this person. But when you leave to go to another job, and you leave to better yourself, and you find out that that job's not for you, and all of a sudden you wanna come back, I think that people need to take a long look at what they're leaving, and when they leave, they're giving up a lot, maybe, perhaps, but the grass is not always green around the other side, you can't really come back. I would have failed to do it, so...
You want to put on the lecture?
Everybody's agreed on the proposal?
Yeah.
You wanna continue?
Well, I want, no.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to reject, unfortunately, the county's request to have benefits reinstated for Signal Operator LeBeck.
Second.
Motion to deny Signal Operator Richard LeBeck's request for reinstating the benefits. On the paper?
Aye.
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 Now, if the union wants to repeal that, then they certainly couldn't go ahead and do that, but we already made a decision that we're saying no.
So, this thing here, this was a very issue for the current person that's working as a health agent, on the agenda.
And it really needs additional information.
Yeah, 'cause it's not really fully explained yet. So we'll hold off and listen to the next meeting. Alright, that's it for personnel?
I'm done.
Good. Then, is there anything else the Board wants to know?
Yes.
Here are a couple of items that were in the package that came in after the agenda was prepared. Talking about this thing here, work for Hathaway Park, Hathaway Park.
I read an email, and I just saw, yeah.
It's a $3,892 grant from the... Cotton River Watershed Council to do some sprucing up in the area along the boat ramp. The only thing they ask from us is to, and the scope of the work is attached, the only thing they ask from us is to put some stone down there just to do some erosion of gold.
Apparently, this goes back, Dr. Rich, this goes back a couple years ago?
2011.
That this organization came down and looked, and they just finally came up and approved the grant, 3892, with 70 million feet of split rail fencing installed, three-gallon native maritime shrubs, and winter berries, polyphenols, 15-gallon containers. So they're doing it for $3,892, and that's paid for by the grant that they want. The only issue that we may have to pay for is some strong, and you talked to Chuck about what... And you talked to Chuck about what we have available, we'll make it work.
They also need a letter of commitment, so I'll make a motion that the town administrator send a letter of commitment on behalf of the town, that we're willing to do our part as far as the stone goes and the work of that, that who lacks is who.
If one of the things, if you look at the email, it says, "I'm going to oversee the work along with Kevin." I think it should be along with the town administrator.
Well, it's still Concom, so...
No, that's not Concom property, that's a...
It's not Concom property, but the conservation commission, because it's a watershed, because there's water along the, same thing with the approval that we just did for, for that well.
Yeah, for the set thing.
Right, has to be approved by the conservation commission. So I don't, I don't, you know, we can just take out this line, I'm willing to oversee it, but it has to be by the town administrator and by the Free Town Conservation Commission.
Conservation Commission.
No, if the Free Town Conservation Commission wants to have a point person?
That's fine.
Then that's fine, but... So we need that motion.
Second.
No.
Yeah, I can second it.
Why, it's not...
Because you can second it, huh? He's going to throw it in. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then the next item is a proposed scope of work from NOBUS Engineering that will allow us to get started on the physical part of the Free Town Screw Project. Contracted amount is twenty-seven thousand, allows us to do some site work, survey work, and surveying the building for hazardous materials before, prior to demolition. Now, this is going to come out of, this comes out of the four hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant, grant, and the process we're using has been vetted through the state purchasing office and their division of contracting and administrative management.
Do we have to have a project manager for this? This is an awfully big project to take...
Well, we do have Serpa who is coordinating for us, and we approved something of that at town meeting.
Yeah, but who's going to watch and make sure that everything that's in this is going to get done?
That's really the, ultimately, it's responsibility of NOBUS Engineering, because they are the ones who are responsible for the work, they're wanting to be working with us in getting the...
I understand that they're doing the work, but who is going to ensure that once NOBUS is done, that this work was done properly? Who's working for the town of Free Town on this?
I can't remember the individual's name, but there is someone that we're working with at the Department of Environmental Management, who has asked to be involved in all of this, and they in fact are going to be writing a note on it. And if it was an environmental manager, I'm sorry, it might have been the...
Can we get that in writing, so if something were to happen that we could go back and, kind of like when the bridges didn't pan out, you know, a couple of times, and there was some back and forth, that we had a project manager that looked over that stuff? Can we just make sure that, that somebody's working for us? Do you guys understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand.
Because I agree that this needs to get done, and I don't have a problem with it, but I just want to make sure that there's somebody watching on that. And when we're spending four hundred and however many odd thousand dollars, we want to make sure that we're getting everything done for that amount.
What else for the project?
This was selected from vendors that were pre-approved by the state.
So you're going to look into who's going to be the ownership of this?
Yeah, it's just a matter of remembering the name.
The state?
Yeah.
And they're going to be responsible for the whole project?
They are going to be responsible for making sure that their department that is funding this is getting the money's worth.
Because what Lisa's talking about is what we had, we got to do with the creatures. We had a, we had a on-site engineer that double-checked everything that was being done.
Right.
So we'll hold this off for the next meeting.
Do you need this?
Is imperative that we have this signed?
I'd like to start the process moving.
All right. I don't mind signing it, but I really think that we need to find out who's going to watch on that.
And I know, and I know who has...
And if we have to go out to an outside person to oversee it, then that's something that we'll have to discuss for the next meeting.
Well, we have thirty days until the only, well, this proposal will be valid.
The proposal will be valid after that, but I'd really like, before we've got good weather, I'd like to get started on the work, because I don't want to have this thing, you know, lapse over into the cold weather when we're not going to be doing demolition.
You look at their proposals, they're saying they're going to work the MCP, EPA, and conduct the assessment, other assessment reports for the state, so...
I did meet with someone who, in fact, was highly involved in the Fort Devon cleanup, and is going to be writing point on this for the state, I have just forgotten his name.
I just, I want to make sure that the town, Free Town's protected, and, you know, this is a big undertaking that we're doing here, you know, kind of like we do with a bridge, you know?
Well, you'll have that information probably, I mean, you'll have that information probably tomorrow, yeah? You want to technically sign this, do you understand that we have the quote person?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to sign this, with the caveat that we got the information from the town administrator on who is going to be the point person for the project, and who is going to oversee, or protect, yeah, protect town.
The insurance.
You know, who's going to go there every day and make sure that all the work is being done in the town together? Who's going to do that? It's not going to be you.
I could be there every day. I wouldn't know what I was looking at.
Right.
What's he doing? He's right near it.
Busy person also.
All right, I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we've heard from Richard, but this is important. All right, is there anything else that matters? That's it.
Can, yeah. Is Langrode done now, because we're supposed to have something for this meeting?
The last time we talked about Langrode, you met with...
Right, and they were supposed to come back at this meeting, so it'll be done?
Well, I think they still have the option of getting a hundred signatures, put it on the special, on the next special town meeting.
Also, the town approved the feasibility study, have you started?
No, I'm going to start it.
Okay. And we had an opportunity to do the library, but we didn't have all the equipment that we needed. Do we have the equipment that's at the library, and do you know when that's going to be done?
No, I have, I've had discussion with one of the board members of the library, and their preference is to actually contract for it, rather than using the free labor. The price differential, if we were to buy it all ourselves, and, or rent it ourselves, would be about eleven hundred dollars, the contract to do it would be about four thousand sixteen. They've got the cost.
Where's the money going to come from?
Would have to come from repair of town buildings.
Why would we spend the extra three thousand dollars? We don't have to.
Offering, because they would prefer that it be done.
Well, last year, they just wanted it done.
Now they want to have somebody, somebody else give it. And I think they've offered the page for about half of it.
What money do they have?
I don't know what do they have.
I think we should go with the client we got, get it done.
We've been planning this for a year already.
We have free labor to have them make it. It doesn't make any sense to us, we have the extra money, but we get it done for nothing.
Then they have to go out and...
If they want to come to the board and talk to us about it, that's whatever, but, I mean, we've been planning this for a year, and they are all tickled pink that we're getting it done.
Yeah, they don't seem to be as excited.
Why, because we kept, because we didn't get a date?
No, I think it's because, I don't know.
Sorry, because I don't know either.
Sure. Are we ready? Without this snafu that we just had with the, with the library, I mean, when were we planning to do this? Get all the equipment that we needed so we could get this done?
No, I'm not going to get the equipment until we make the decision, because some of it we would have to rent, and I don't want to spend, pay a daily rental fee for equipment to wait for it to get going. I mean, once the library board decides which way they want to go, then they'll buy the paint, once they buy the paint, the rest of it's easy to get.
Sure, we don't have to worry about it until we buy the paint, I guess? It doesn't make any sense, we get...
When you go, when you go borrow what tomorrow, will you play help?
Well, I don't think we're going to, those are two days that we've been talking. This is the library board, who did you have personally?
I was talking to Mr. McHugh. There is some concern about the condition of the building, and about pressure washing and some other activities, they're quite disinterested.
Capital OMG. They asked for the building to be power washed, Mr. McHugh.
Look, if they're worried about power washing going to damage the building, then maybe no one should be in the building.
I feel like I'm coming at the end of a conversation that I wasn't at the beginning of.
Well, we're at the same point here.
Yeah, last year, they wanted it power washed, and they wanted it done, and because the walkway came out so nice at the town hall, and they were all on board with this, and now all of a sudden, I'm hearing this.
Okay, then we'll just tell them we're doing it, won't we?
I mean, if they have, well, if they have funds in their library thing, and that's what they want to do, I mean, I don't know if we can stop them from doing that, but we're not going to take the funds out of what we've already approved up for town buildings and everything, to all of a sudden go and pay for something we thought was going to be free.
We got free labor provided by the sheriff, and they worked on, and they did a great job when they put our new stairway, the front, the hall, excellent job. We just paid for, we paid for materials, and we had a contract with it as supervisor what we're, it came out great. We've been arranging to have, finally got the okay from the sheriff that they're going to paint the library, and all of a sudden this happens, this is nuts. Doesn't make sense to me. So they ought to decide what they want to do, because I don't think...
No wonder it was left off the old business tonight.
There you go, now it's back on.
No, I had it in a, actually, in my prior report here.
All right. I don't have it, I don't want to bring up anything else.
So I'm confused, what's your, just what's the decision, going to go with our first plan, or we want to talk to the board, the library? So what's up?
Well, times, by the time we get...
It's going to be winter.
It's going to be winter, and then the libraries will have to get painted. I don't know, that's one member of the board, the whole...
He's represented that he was talking to the other folks.
They have a meeting, is, are there minutes to this?
No, there's probably no minutes.
There's probably no minutes. You know what I say, let's do what we're going to do, that's my opinion.
What are we going to do, like tell the sheriff, oh, thanks, we changed our mind?
So should we have a motion of what we're going to do?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we drove forward with the original plan that we have the library painted by the sheriff's department.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, anything else? What can I? Nothing else? Okay. Motion to adjourn. Somebody make, no, no?
I think there's miscellaneous things, I know we were going to call it all, wasn't there, letters from different...
No. That was just, we put that one aside for next meeting, the one we got from the health agent, that's for the next meeting. And this was just a, this is just a COA board meeting that opposed, they just sent it to us as courtesy. That's it, that's all we've got. Everybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
All right. Okay, thank you.